It is hard to believe, but it's already February 4th, Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, at six o'clock, and I'm calling this Lacey City Council meeting to order. Councilmember Stedman is attending remotely, but the rest of the council is present. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also want to acknowledge that we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Tridium Essing Creek, including the Nasqually Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. That can again motion to approve this evening's agenda and consent agenda.
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And first up on our approved agenda is we have two public recognitions this evening for Public Service Awards. And we'll have Ryan Andrews come up and talk about our two distinguished.
Our distinguished guests come up as well if they'd like. So, yeah, please. Good evening, council. So those that may not know me, my name is Ryan Andrews, and I'm a community planning manager here with the city. In my role as community planning manager, one of the duties I have is to staff our city's planning commission. Tonight, we're honoring two of our planning commission members that are have served two terms on the planning commission. We have Eddie Bishop and Daphne Retsloff. So our planning commission, the role of planning commission here at the city is to provide recommendation to the city council on long-range planning issues, goals and policies and regulations that come across the city council's desk. Oftentimes, those regulations come with a recommendation, and oftentimes, those recommendations come from the planning commission. As the council's aware, because a majority of the council members have sat on the planning commission, the planning commission is kind of a thankless job in a lot of ways. It's a lot of time, energy, and effort spent preparing and reviewing materials that the staff usually prepares for them, and it comes with little or no thanks. In fact, we've had some rather heated public hearings where we've had this room filled, and we need to explain to our people that are in the audience that this is not the council. These are your neighbors, and they are here to hear from you on planning-related issues. And so, yeah, the planning commission is really a thankless job, and we thank Eddie and Daphne a lot for their service to the planning commission. So I just wanted to go over a little bit about each one and what they tackled when they were on the planning commission. So Eddie started on the planning commission back in September of 2018, and Daphne started in April of 2019. Both have worked on updates to our pedestrian and bicycle plan. They've addressed issues around homelessness and housing, specifically around regulations for emergency housing facilities, our review of our affordable housing plan and our housing action plan, the updates to the Shoreline Master Program, an urban forest management plan, issues around climate, including reviewing the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, stormwater, reviewing our stormwater comprehensive plan, major update to our capital facilities plan, addressing neighborhood commercial code updates, which was a significant one within the last year. And unfortunately, they're not going to be able to complete this work, but they certainly helped us jumpstart it with a update to our comprehensive plan, which is well underway at this point, but won't be finished out under their watch at this point. But we thank them for helping us set the stage on that. So, you know, just personally, I really have enjoyed working with both the planning commission members you see in front of you here tonight. They're fantastic people. Eddie, who is an avid cyclist, I think Eddie provided a fantastic lens, everything that came through the planning commission related to transportation. Eddie was really gave it a critical eye, especially when looking at pedestrian bicycle infrastructure. So Eddie, I thank you for that. And Daphne, you really brought a great perspective related to housing, especially making sure that home ownership options never got lost in the housing conversation, and how important that is to establish things like generational wealth and those kinds of things. I thank you for those conversations and that perspective as well. So with that, we have some awards to present to you tonight, and I'll turn it over to the mayor to say a few words, and then you guys can say a few words as well. So, thank you.
Sure. So, inside, there's two distinguished, distinguished Public Service Awards for your time on the planning commission for 2019 and through 2024. I've really had the pleasure to appoint both these individuals to the planning commission and then reappoint them to the planning commission. And it's hard to believe that now you guys have termed out. Just to show you how quickly time has gone, but as it's been said, this is such a critical function of the city of Lacey, to have your citizens be advising the council on every major issue that comes in for the council, and be able to put all that time and energy and basically be volunteering for your community. It is just a critical part of what we do. And so, from the behalf of the city council, on behalf of the whole city, and our urban growth area, we just wanted to thank you for all your time that you've put in to this community. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
There's one for each. Want to make a few words, and then we'll shake your hand. I didn't have anything planned to say, but I just want to thank, thanks for the opportunity. It was great. Rick introduced me to the idea and interviewed and appreciate the role that I had. I learned a lot about the community, a lot about the governmental process, and so I thank City of Lacey for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you also to the mayor and to Ryan for the recognition tonight. And I have to thank councilmember Cox for recruiting me to this position, which I really enjoyed my six years there. And it was, a lot of it was fun getting to, getting to see what the commission and the council actually does. And it was a lot of fun, and thank you all.
Do we stay back here, or do we come around? Okay. Next up on our agenda is proclamations for Black History Month. And when councilmember Dunnings ready?
City of Lacey official proclamation. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by Black and African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And?
Whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a noted African American historian, scholar, educator, and publisher, founded the Association for Study of, for the Study of African American Life and History, and initiated Negro History Week in 1926, selecting the month of February to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. And in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of Blacks in American history and beyond, advance the cause of civil rights, and strengthen families, communities, and the nation. And?
Whereas the first enslaved Africans were brought to the Americas in 1619, marking the beginning of legalized slavery, which continued with the founding of the United States of America, and was legal in this country until the ratification of the 13th Amendment in 1865. And?
Whereas since the abolishment of slavery, many iterations of racist law and policies were instituted across the country, served to disenfranchise Blacks and African Americans from full political, economical, economic, and educational and social opportunities. And?
Whereas despite these abhorrent attempts to enslave and then exclude them, as a result of their determination, hard work, and perseverance, Blacks have made invaluable and lasting contributions to our community, the state, the nation, and the world, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, medicine, the military, sports, and the arts. And?
Whereas the Association for the Study of African American Life and Histories 2025 theme is African Americans and Labor. And whereas the Lacey City Council is committed to creating community where everyone feels safe and welcome. And the observance of Black History Month calls our city's attention to the continued need to dismantle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month in the City of Lacey. And I urge all community members to recognize the continuing need to dismantle racism and to build a society that's more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Signed myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date. And if Cliff and?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just want to make a quick remark. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Ryder, City Council, and esteemed members of, guest members here. On behalf of the Pearl Foundation of PGSM, I'm deeply honored to accept this Black History Month proclamation. This recognition is more than ceremonial gesture. It's a testament to the city's commitment to acknowledging and celebrating rich contribution of Black Americans, both past and present. Black history is American history. It is the story of resilience, innovation, and courage in the face of adversity. From pioneers who laid the foundation for civil rights to local leaders who have shaped our communities here in Lacey, Black history is woven into the fabric of this city. This proclamation is not, is not only honor, not only honors the legacy of those who came before us, but also challenges us to continue fostering equity, inclusion, and opportunity for future generations. By embracing this history, we strengthen the bonds that tie our communities together and pave the way for more just and vibrant future for all. Thank you, City of Lacey, for standing with us as we continue this important work that we do. Together, we honor the past, celebrate the present, and build a future where all voices are heard and valued. Thank you.
And if you want to come here, I'd like to shake everyone's hand. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you, thank you. So, next on our agenda is public comment. We do have one person signed up for public comment here, and then we also have someone signed up for Zoom. And so, let's start with Craig Foster, who's here. Could you please introduce yourself, say where you're from, and you have three minutes?
Okay. I'm Craig Foster. I've lived in the Woodland Creek Housing Development for about 50 years, and then been a customer of Lacey Utilities since they put in our water system. A few years ago, and we have the privilege of paying an extra 25 or so dollars a month, more than our neighbors across the street for having water, but we're going to be annexed soon, so I'm hoping that fee will be rescinded. I have, just as a minor matter, I'm really apologize for bringing this up here at the city council, but I got a notice of to disconnect my water service, shockingly, because I paid my bill in, on January 15th. At the same time, I had a credit card that was misused online. The credit card company canceled that card, which I had paid my bill on, issued a new card. I had no idea that I was past due until I got the notice. I was in the office within an hour of getting this notice, and I was waived the fee for, the extra fee for being late, but there's, there was a, an extra charge for the, the notice of discontinuation of service, which is, I don't know, it's $15 or something. And I asked if I could appeal that, or where I would appeal it. There's no appeal. That's why I'm here. There's always an appeal in our justice system. And I can understand the charge when people are not paying their bill. You have horrible backlog of non-payment. My situation has never been like that. And I would just ask that there is a manner of appeal, because situations do occur that are unforeseen. And I would really like to have that fee rescinded, and then also have a better way to appeal these charges. You know, it's shocking that I was told there was no appeal. That's it, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We really appreciate it. And we'll have our same manager get in touch with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is, we have one Zoom. Can we bring, is that person online?
Okay. Well, then, given that, is there anyone else wishing to address this council tonight? Seeing none, then we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is under resolution, 1163, the Memorial Roadway Designation for Fire Chief Steve Brooks. And Rick, I'll let you take this, and there'll be a motion.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. As you are aware, Lacey Fire District Number Three Fire Chief Steve Brooks retired this last, well, I guess now it's January 10th, last month, since we're in February now, but on January 10th officially retired from Lacey Fire District Three after 20 years of distinguished service to the community, the region, and the city of Lacey. At the January 7th council meeting, there was a request made by the mayor via letter to have council consider naming, a request to dedicate, or excuse me, to designate a portion of Fran Street between Lacey Boulevard and Pacific as a memorial roadway named after Chief Brooks. And again, in the packet, you'll have the letter from Mayor Ryder, as well as another letter that Mayor Ryder sent to the state legislature for recognition at the state level, and then also an example of what that Memorial Street sign would look like. After conversation at the January 7th meeting, the council agreed to consider approving a resolution designate Fran Street between the portion of Lacey Boulevard and Pacific Avenue as the, as a Memorial Street honoring Chief Brooks. And again, as I can take a little bit of personal liberty, I've worked with Chief Brooks in my capacity as Community Economic Development Director for over 15 years, and I know we've coordinated a lot on various different topics, including how we can work together on annual fire inspections, looking at code reviews for project developments, and other partnerships through that capacity with Fire District Three. And a lot of that was facilitated by Chief Brooks. And he was a great partner, has been a great partner, and Fire District Three has remained a great partner to the city as well. And I know that he's done a lot of work regionally with, working with our regional entities like TCOM and others, as well as providing great services. Another key component I want to mention as well is, you know, some of the things that maybe the residents of the community may not be aware of is, you know, having rates be prescribed for their home insurance based on a number of factors that are provided by the Lacy's Building Department and the building codes, as well as fire response times. And that's another thing that Chief Brooks worked really hard at and worked with us to make sure that we received a very high insurance rating. So that also equates to a reduction in the cost of insurance for homeowners as well. So I just want to kind of point those things out, and then request the council to consider a motion tonight to approve Resolution Number 1163, designate Fran Street between Lacey Boulevard and Pacific Avenue Southeast as a memorial roadway honoring Chief Steve Brooks.
And I will make that motion to approve Resolution 1163, designate Fran Street between Lacey Boulevard and Pacific Avenue Southeast. designate Fran Street between Lacey Boulevard and Pacific Avenue Southeast as a memorial roadway honoring Chief Steve Brooks.
Second.
And second, is there any discussion? I mean, we, go ahead, Councilmember.
And I would just add to what Rick said. You know, Steve was just a really great community leader, and still is actually. Still, even now that he's retired, he's still very involved. I sit on both EMS and TCOM, and he's still involved in both of those organizations at a pretty high level. So he's been just an incredible community asset and did a great job as our chief, so I'll leave it at that.
Is there any other discussion?
Chief was always the smartest guy in the room.
Yeah, I've obviously been through a couple of these conversations, and I can't take all the credit for this. This was, you know, we knew Steve was going to be retiring, and this was really a collaboration between talking to several different firefighters and different people on what we could do, along with the city manager, on what we could do to honor Chief Brooks. And so I just had the lucky distinction to start the process on the city side, but I can't take all the credit for it. But I wholeheartedly support this. And I think every time we drive by and see Chief Steve Brooks' name there, it's going to, you know, warm law people's hearts over the years, so. Is there any other discussion? Then it's been moved in second to approve this Resolution 1163, designate Fran Street between Lacey Boulevard and Pacific Avenue Southeast as a memorial roadway honoring Chief Steve Brooks. All in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion passes unanimously. Yay. So next up is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you. And we've got a few items on the City Manager's Report tonight. The first item is an interlocal agreement regarding the Regional Environmental Education Partnership. This is an interlocal agreement we're requesting the council to authorize, and I want to invite Doug Christensen, our Water Resources Engineer, to come up and give an overview of the interlocal agreement. Or, excuse me, Senior Utility Engineer. Sorry, Doug.
Thank you. Senior Stormwater Engineer, that works. So this is the Regional Environmental Education Partnership, or REEP, interlocal agreement renewal for the years 2025 through 2029. So we'll start with some background information on our stormwater program requirements. We'll meet the REEP partnership and Stream Team. Then we'll discuss our various programs for the community, stewardship opportunities, and pollution prevention educational campaigns. We'll touch upon our efforts at integrating equity into the work we do, and then we'll take a quick look ahead. So Lacey is one of 83 cities and five counties in Western Washington that are authorized to discharge stormwater runoff to waters of the state under the Western Washington MPDES Phase Two Municipal Stormwater Permit, as long as the many permit compliance requirements are met. The intent of the permit is to reduce the discharge of pollutants in our municipal stormwater system and protect water quality in surface water and groundwater. So we address polluted runoff water in a variety of ways. This permit requires us to develop and implement an overall stormwater management program that's comprised of nine main component programs, one of which is public education and outreach, which has long been a priority for Lacey's Water Resources Division. Our municipal stormwater permit was reissued last July 2024 and is in effect for five years until mid-2029. The updated permit includes a wide variety of new and continuing requirements to be addressed by our stormwater management programs. And for public education and outreach, many of our efforts are addressed through regional collaboration. So REEP is our acronym for the Regional Environmental Education Partnership. Ally Brown from Lacey Water Resources is our REEP representative for the city of Lacey, and she collaborates with our colleagues at the cities of Olympia and Tumwater, along with Thurston County, under an interlocal agreement. We are all municipal stormwater permittees, so we all have the same basic permit mandated requirements to address. We also share common waters to which stormwater is discharged, which is mainly Bud Inlet and Henderson Inlet. I'm huge in sound, excuse me. By joining forces on public education and outreach efforts, we provide consistent messaging, reduce duplication of efforts, and share materials which can increase efficiency and reduce cost. Stream Team of Thurston County is the public-facing brand of REEP. Stream Team has been a fixture locally for 35 years, dating back to 1990. So it's well-established and well-known in this area. We provide free, quality environmental education activities, volunteer opportunities, and hands-on science projects. Our events are usually very well-attended, and many of those participants are Lacey residents. So some of our programs to talk about. Hands-on science is a fun way for citizens of all ages to learn about our local environments. Stream Bug Monitoring, which is shown in the picture here, connects people to their local streams. It gives them an opportunity to take part in community science. Marine Creature Mondays, where you get close to sea life at Boston Harbor. We have a diver that goes down and comes back up with sea urchins and sea stars and crabs and whatever else he finds down there. And then participants can examine it up close and touch it safely. The Salmon Stewards teach people about salmon and the effects of polluted storm runoff on them. The salmon stewards are at key viewing spots during the salmon runs, which is generally from August to December every year. And throughout the year, Stream Team participates in a variety of community events. Last year, we brought stormwater and water quality activities to events like the Lacey Fun Fair and Children's Day. Environmental lectures and workshops offer a formal space to learn where the community can engage with experts in environmental and stormwater science. Oops. Page stuck together. So Lacey prides itself in its devoted community engagement and stewardship of natural areas. During 2024, we hosted six distinct restoration stewardship events for our community here. Most of these events focused on invasive plant removal in the riparian zone at Woodland Creek Community Park. Additional efforts were held in the forests of Wonderwood Park and Lake Lewis Habitat Reserve, again removing invasive plants and planting native trees in their place. Volunteer events hosted under the Stream Team banner benefit from advertisement throughout the county, as well as support from partners at these events. REEP also develops educational materials about stormwater best management practices, what we call BMPs, for both businesses and residents to reduce the potential for water pollution. For businesses, this includes best practices for restaurants, automotive repair shops, landscapers, and other types of businesses. For residents, pet waste, yard care, and car care are some of the primary outreach priorities. And these are addressed through campaigns and slogans such as "Don't Let Your Pooch Pollute" to encourage picking up pet poop, and "Don't Drip and Drive" to address vehicle fluid leaks. With our 2024 through 2029 Municipal Stormwater Permit, we have new requirements to reach overburdened communities. Three partners have developed an equity index to map areas of Thurston County with higher burdens using various data sets. They can compare audience data from the past 10 years and find gaps and determine how to better serve those areas. REEP is committed to developing one meaningful partnership per year with an organization that works with overburdened communities. Last year, City of Lacey and REEP worked closely with community partner CIELO, that's C-I-E-L-O, which is the Centro Integral Educativo Latino de Olympia. We hosted hands-on science events, especially for Spanish-speaking community members, providing interpreters, translated print materials, and free transportation. We will continue this work guided by a two-year equity plan to grow the availability of services provided in Spanish and other languages. As we look to the future of our ever-growing city, we must recognize the value of community engagement and involvement. Our community is here, excited to learn and help to protect the environment that sustains our city and its natural resources. REEP provides the support essential to continue to do this work and engage in meaningful activities with the public. For example, throughout 2025, REEP leaders will work closely with the Hands-on Children's Museum to develop stormwater educational content for their planned renovations. So tonight, we're asking the council to please consider a consent vote to authorize the city manager to sign for the approval of our five-year interlocal agreement.
Can I get a motion?
And I thank you.
I would move that we authorize the city manager to sign the interlocal agreement with Thurston County and the cities of Olympia and Tumwater for the Regional Environmental Education Program, or REEP.
Second. It's been moved in second. Discussion?
I would say this is a really valuable program, and I'm so glad to see it expanding. I think it's great, so good work.
It's very popular.
What are some of the activities we think we might partner with the Hands-on Children Museum on? Or do we know yet?
Well, I think the idea is to establish a stormwater educational area in the museum as they're renovating and upgrading. So it'd be, I believe it'd be a permanent type of exhibit.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved in second to authorize the city manager to sign this interlocal agreement. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? And then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Next on the report is more of a briefing and update. As you may recall, well, you know we're in the throes of, in the process of updating our comprehensive plan, the 2025 update. And if you recall, last year, around this early spring, we had a couple of work sessions with council to talk about that process, and the first step was going to be that robust community engagement plan and kind of got some feedback from council what that could look like. And tonight, Ryan Andrews, our Planning Manager, will kind of give an overview of the results we received thus far and the process that started back in July of 2024. So Ryan will give you an overview of what we've heard from the community and what that engagement program has looked like.
Yep, thanks, Rick. So as mentioned, tonight is an overview of the comprehensive plan outreach that we've been doing since this last summer and the results of a survey that just ended this last December. This is a presentation that was given to the Planning Commission, the Youth Council, and the Commission on Equity. You are unfortunately the last to receive it, but we wanted to make sure you did receive it before the joint meeting that you have with the Planning Commission next week. Really, the only agenda item for that night is to go, start going through the various elements of our comprehensive plan. And so this will help set the stage for some of the information that's going to be presented next week. No action is needed from this tonight. So first, I want to talk a little bit about community outreach. And as I mentioned, we started back in July, and the results of what's going to be presented tonight ended in December. Well, ended this last December, but will be going on through December of 2025. You may also remember that early in 2024, we did a visioning session with the council, the Youth Council, and the Planning Commission as well. And it was made clear to us at that point that the council really directed a variety of different engagement techniques, both in-person and online, and both events that we hosted here as well as attending community events. And hopefully, you see that reflected here in this. And so we started out with those visioning sessions, but we, this last summer, we're also at a variety of community events that you can see up on the screen, starting with the South Sound Barbecue Festival and ending with the Depot Holiday Night Market in December. The survey that we did distribute, we got far and wide through various different avenues, including the city's website, social media, news articles, Lacey Life utility billing inserts, and the like. We, this was the first time that we actually incentivized through financial means people's participation in the survey. We actually doled out five $100 Visa gift cards to qualifying survey participants. And actually, one of our Youth Council members actually won a $100 gift card. So that was nice to see somebody there win one of those. But overall, total outreach to date, approximately 45,000 direct community contacts through all of our various avenues. That's, I think that that's an impressive number. Obviously, that's not 45,000 surveys filled out, but those are the number of touchpoints we've had with the community since December, or since July through December. So at those events that I mentioned, those, that, through the in-person engagement, we had 282 written comments. And essentially, those were kind of open-ended questions. What do you care about? And this was really targeted at residents of Lacey, our urban growth area, as well as visitors to the area as well. And the common themes that came up were things like increased connectivity, so transportation issues, things like sidewalks, crosswalks, bike lanes, and better accessibility. Year-round recreation, places to go that are covered and indoors. Places with turf and lights that people could use in the evening times. And pools and splash parks kept coming up over and over again. Should be no surprise, affordable homeownership, housing options in higher densities is a big issue within our community. And then also, people really appreciate the trees and natural settings, our community gardens, and the environmental protections that we have throughout our various regulations. On the screen, you'll see the social media reach. So we did 23 total posts. We had almost over 10,000 views and 622 different interactions, which are people that actually clicked the survey link, shared, commented, liked, et cetera. And we had almost 400 people fill out the online survey with languages in our major languages here in Lacey, so English, Spanish, and Vietnamese. And those are our top two languages for people that do not speak English as a primary language in their household. What you'll see at the bottom of the screen there is survey results over time. So you can see that we started with a bang, but we got pretty low in, it's really smaller, but about November, we started kind of bottoming out on our survey responses. You'll see that next peak, which starts at the beginning of, end of November, beginning of December. That's really when we kicked into gear on the Visa gift card promotion. So we, that wasn't a part of the original plan, but you can tell with our results that it kind of injected some new interest in completing the survey. People that did not hit the submit button at the very end.
They did the survey but didn't?
They didn't get all the way through it, for whatever reason. So it'll, it catalogs incomplete, you know, submissions, and that's what those are.
How many, how many incompletes were there?
Uh, I think it was on that slide, wasn't it?
Hundreds.
Thousands?
Oh, sorry.
Four hundred.
It doesn't say exactly. You just see the, it's, it's less than those that submitted. That's the blue line there that's at the bottom. Unfortunately, I don't have the total unsubmitted responses as a part of that, this slide. So as I mentioned, you know, a significant amount of email, utility billing inserts, and those kinds of things. But I also wanted to mention some other outreach that we had, and this is kind of more person-to-person outreach. So primarily through our business outreach program, our Economic Development Coordinator, Wesley, did 32 interviews with business owners in the community and puts out a regular newsletter to about 2,000 contacts that the survey was a part of, as well as those interviews. We also are doing, through our housing element update to our comprehensive plan, the racially disparate impacts analysis part of that. We have various affinity groups that were interviewed, including folks that had recently developed accessory dwelling units, the low-income providers, as well as low-income developed accessory dwelling units, the low-income providers, as well as low-income renters, manufactured home communities, and focused on the military. Those survey, I believe at this point, the survey is complete, you're not able to submit anymore. But those were also, we took us, did a survey through that consultant, that people were able to submit a video of their responses. And for each video they submitted, they were given $25 per participant. As part of the update to our climate change and resiliency element as well, we held listening sessions, including climate-related and other nonprofits and the real estate community. So who did we hear from? Well, we heard from over 88% of those people that live in Lacey, another almost 30% that work in Lacey. As you can see here on the screen, it's essentially a heat map of those people that put in their address and where they lived. And you can see, or where they live, you can see that the vast majority of these are Lacey residents. However, it did go into our urban growth area. And obviously, our long-range planning, because we do joint planning with Thurston County, we want to make sure that we're engaging with the urban growth area and getting feedback from UGA residents as well. The survey results do align well with our city demographics. 77% that filled out the survey identified as white or Caucasian, another 7.2% as Hispanic or Latinx, 6.8% Asian, and 5% black or African-American. And those are within a percentage point, one way or the other, as far as the makeup of our community. So statistically, it jives well with the makeup of the community. And over half identified as female. The median age was between 35 to 49, with a median household income between $100,000 and $149,000 per year. Another interesting thing is almost 64% lived in Lacey for almost five, or five or more years. So we did have a good number of respondents that had been here for some time. Wanted to focus a little bit on the, kind of the renter homeowner split that we do have in our community and making sure that we did reach out to renters within our survey. So 34.3% of our housing within the city and the urban growth area is renter-occupied. Now, our survey results, if you'll see on the screen, there was almost 19%. So we were a little low on the renter-homeowner divide. But one of the things that we did do, we had, at the very beginning of November, we identified, I think we had 9% at that point that were renters. So we, between the, beginning of November and the end of the survey, got that up to 19%. The way we did that was through site visits to multifamily developments. So we actually, Jennifer Adams, our housing coordinator, actually went to 32 multifamily complexes, knocked on doors, got management companies willing to distribute this through email and other means to their tenants. And that actually boosted our results significantly. We also did a targeted social media boost. So this was the first time as well that we purchased social media. Through social media, we're able to target through various means, ways to be able to identify whether somebody may be a renter or not. And so we bought social media directed at potential renters, so that when they popped up on Facebook or Instagram or something like that, they saw our survey. So if you've ever maybe said, you know, you bought something, or you talked to your spouse or your loved one about something you might buy, and your phone hears you and it pops up on social media, that's what we did.
Making the algorithms work for us.
Yeah, exactly. So what did the community have to say? So the survey questions, there were two main open-ended survey questions. One, around the vision of the future of Lacey. So the question was, when thinking about the future of our city, what do you want it to look like? And the second was in a quality-of-life-related question. In what ways can the City of Lacey support and improve upon our community's quality of life? And so I'll go into the broad categories of the responses that we received. I'm not going to have a lot of time to be able to go into great detail. One of the things I wanted to point out, and our assumption was that affordable housing would probably be the top one, and that was not actually borne out in the survey results. The number-one feedback that we got was related to transportation, infrastructure, and network connectivity, especially walkability. So you can see the other ones here on the screen, the number-two, and these are in the order of the number of responses that we received in each category. Public health, safety, and social services. Number-three is affordable housing. Number-four, sustainability and environmental conservation. Number-five, community identity, amenities, and recreation. And number-six, economic growth and local businesses. So, community goals. As we mentioned, the first one being transportation, infrastructure, and network connectivity. Requests here for better pedestrian and cyclist infrastructure, better networks and quality. Requests for more accessible neighborhoods with more walkable amenities, places that are closer to where people lived, so that they don't need to get wherever they want to go with a car. And concerns over sprawl and car-dependent developments. And there's the comments you can see here on the screen that were brought up. I'm not going to read those. Those are, you can take a look at those on the screen as we go through each one. But the comments, you know, bear out kind of some of the findings that we found as well. Around public health, safety, and social services, a lot of this related to the unhoused population, specifically solutions around shelters and rehabilitation programs. A request for additional law enforcement, mental health, and emergency services resources, and comments frequently identify concerns over housing, mental health, and crime. Third was affordable housing and urban development. So here, obviously, more affordable housing, more mixed-income neighborhoods, those kinds of things, but also things about people liked community character that wasn't just kind of cookie cutter, things that made neighborhoods unique. Requests for cohesive, beautiful tree development. So people really liked the trees, but they wanted, they really identified as trees as being uniquely Lacey, but wanted to make sure that that was also done in tandem with new development that was unique and identified well with kind of the northwest look and Fourth is sustainability and environmental conservation. So again, trees, natural habitats, open spaces is a big focus here, sustainable urban growth, minimizing environmental impacts, and eco-friendly initiatives like renewable energy and reduced reliance on fossil fuels. Fifth one, community identity, amenities, and recreation. So creating parks, family-friendly spaces, facilities like community centers, trails, playgrounds. Again, this is where the indoor recreational facilities came in. We heard a lot about pools and splash parks, but also a lot about community identity related to places that people could just go and identify as the community. And this is really, I think, something that we're trying to kind of tease out a little bit. I think, you know, in Lacey, for a long time, we've lacked that place that kind of connects us all. And so when we talk to people, we go out into the community, that they want that place to go, that they can gather. Things come up quite often, like, here it says more downtown-style gathering areas, but they want like arts places, they want, you know, galleries, they want places to go see a play, they want the Washington Center in Lacey. Those are things that are comments that are frequently came out of this.
Good.
And then finally, economic growth and local businesses. And here, it's really making sure that our commercial areas are attractive and functional, but also supporting our local entrepreneurs, our local small businesses, making sure that we're providing assistance for them, that we're lowering taxes where we can, and encouraging that local investment. So that was the open-ended part of the survey. I'm going to go into a little bit about what's called survey geo-budgeting, which is a unique term. And what we did was, we asked people two different questions. Number one, and we allowed them to play a little bit of SimCity. Number one, where will the new homes go? And number two, where will the new jobs go? And so on the screen here is where will the new homes go? So our projections are, in the next 20 years, we're going to grow by 20,000 more people. That means 8,250 new homes. Where would you like them to go? And so people on the map actually could put dots where they wanted the population to go. And I have the results of that here to show you in a second. There's different graphics at the bottom, kind of showing the different options that we are allowing people to kind of decide where they wanted to go. Here on the jobs side, so where, you know, if we've got to accommodate 20,000 more people to live, we need to find a space for approximately 9,000 new jobs. And those could go in a variety of different kind of uses that are shown at the bottom of the screen. So this is the combined results of that geo-budgeting exercise. One showing the commercial priorities, where people want to see more commercial development. You know, the three main areas that pop, three or four main areas that popped up here are the Cabela's area around Quimeth Village. It shouldn't be any surprise. I think that, obviously, you know, the, part of this is that the future development of that area is a little bit out of the city's control. So we need to recognize that. Also, our woodland district, our area around kind of the exit 111 around, in Hawks Prairie, around Costco, Home Depot, that area, and then also south College Street and Elm Highway. On the residential side, this was a little bit more kind of spread out. You can see pretty much yellow around the entire UGA. So as it, you know, yellow is kind of the least number of responses, all the way up to red, which would be the most. Quimeth Village, shot to the top here as well. Also, the area around the rack and Esqually Middle School, and that we are seeing a lot of development there, especially single-family subdivisions. And then the area around, specifically around South Sound Center, got a lot of responses as well. One area that I'll point out that's a little bit unique, and I'm not exactly sure why, it's called the Woodland Creek Wetlands on that slide there. I think people tended, because we showed this with an aerial photo, people tended to drag and drop where there were, where there was undeveloped property. And so that may be an area, because this was an area owned by St. Martin's, that isn't necessarily easily developed, but got a lot of pins, because I think it's a vast amount of open space. And people see that and think, oh, well, maybe that's an area that could be developed in the future.
Ryan?
Yes.
About that opportunity for folks to drag and drop, we didn't put any sort of restrictions on it based on current land use zoning?
No.
Like, so we didn't say, you can only put it in the places where we're currently zoned to allow residential. We just said, put it where you think it should go.
That's correct.
Kind of neat.
Yep. And actually, this is leading up to our future land use map. So this is going to be a part of the discussion at the joint meeting, which is, in the past, the city has not had a future land use map, which is essentially kind of a roadmap to the future as far as future zoning goes. So it's, it's a higher-level map than just a zoning map that shows what broad categories, which areas should be residential versus commercial versus industrial. And that will be integrated into the updated comprehensive plan. So you can see here on this slide, future land use map really identifies those general locations and intensity of the land uses, and implements the goals and vision over 20 years. But the zoning map is really kind of where the rubber meets the road. So we'll actually have some different options just to show you as far as what the future land use map of Lacey could look like, and some ability for you to weigh in at the joint meeting on that. So, next steps. First of all, I wanted to mention that we're not done with community outreach. In fact, we're just about midway through the entire process. We are holding a community open house next Wednesday, February 12th, here in the council chambers from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it is an open house drop-in session. And we will, as part of that, be looking at and having the community weigh in on those future land use map alternatives, some of the draft goals and policies that we've come up with on our various comprehensive plan elements, and then engaging them on how to participate as we do draft the plan into the future. So this slide here shows kind of the community engagement phasing along the way. So it's a four-phase process, starting with visioning, which we've already completed. And now we are completing the community priorities phase, and now moving into the draft plan phase this spring with a final plan by later this summer. So this, the purpose of the open house is to make sure and touching base with the community one more time before we move forward to start drafting final goals and policies. So, next steps overall, we will be back with draft elements after the joint meeting. There will be, as council's requested, a concurrent review by the Planning Commission and the City Council for each element. The City Council has asked kind of to have their hands in the development of these goals and policies. So the elements will be brought to you, I believe, starting in March as we complete them. We will have additional community review through the spring, so a website review and different engagement methods as we move into the spring, with final drafts anticipated this summer, and City Council adoption by December 31st of 2025. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Have any of us filled out the surveys? Anybody?
I did.
I was one of the incompletes. I don't think I finished mine.
I didn't finish mine either. I have a question. So is rezoning going to be a part of this comprehensive plan update? So based on feedback and everything else, if we don't, if we need to move things around, we're going to look at moving things around for the rezone?
Yes. So when you, when you say rezoning, I think, you know, there's a couple aspects of that. Number one, there will likely be some rezoning as a result of the adopted future land use map. We have also received a significant number of private applications that will, has been submitted to us as well, that we will need to vet through a process to figure out what moves forward and what doesn't, through a kind of a private applicant rezone process. So that's kind of the rezoning part. And I know, you know, you've, in the past, asked about like our development regulations. The one thing that, just to be aware of, so the rezoning establishes the new zone, but the development regulations or the actual implementation part of that zone, that's something that's going to have to come later. So because we have such a significant amount of work to do, and we essentially have three or four staff to do all of this work, we're not going to be able to get to that until 2026. So I just wanted to, you know, be realistic about kind of, you know, our future. This will set the stage for a lot of work to come in the, in the future of work programs that we will have moving forward.
That's good news.
If I can just add on, and I believe too, with the implementation code, again, you have to get the policy in set, and then you go right in the implementation. But some of that groundwork will be also coming through the policy conversations as well, the guidance, so.
Great. Any questions? Nope?
On that topic, I'm really glad that we asked residents where they thought that we should have additional housing. I know we also, and I've brought it up before, we have other reports that we can draw from that identify places where if we had a zone that permitted more residential housing, like more density, we could get closer to some of our carbon reduction goals. So like, we have places, we know where there are areas of land that are not currently zoned to allow additional residential units to be built, but we can change that, and this is the process to do that. So I'm excited, even if we can't get all the way there until 2026, that we can get on that road.
Okay. No one else?
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you. That's, you know, as you can see, there's been a lot of work that's been put into that, and there's a lot more work to go. And again, this is well timed, because as Ryan mentioned, next Tuesday's work session will be a work session with the Planning Commission to kind of start looking at, talking about the land use designations maps, the transportation element, the climate action element, as well as the housing element, just to get that initial council feedback, as well as dialogue between the council and Planning Commission as they go through and do that detailed work and bring it back to the council. Also, just again, a precursor and emphasize what Ryan mentioned, in May is when we'll start our workshops, which is going to be those workshops and events of the council meetings. I think we'll start them at four, to do more deeper dives and deeper conversations on some of the elements that are coming out of the comp plan conversation, so that council can, one, be briefed, and also weigh in, too. So there'll be a process that'll be going on throughout the year as we work towards this update. All right. Next on my city manager report, this is another project. It's been a key project for quite some time. I know council's been very excited and supportive of it. We are here to introduce an award for Lacey contract number PW 202206. This is the bid awards for the Cuyahoga Park Phase 1A, and I want to turn it over to Ashley Smith, our engineering design manager, for the presentation.
Good evening. Excited to present the award of Lacey contract number PW 202206 for Greg Cuyahoga Park Phase 1A to Low Bitter Midway Underground LLC. Their bid amount is $6,136,785.84 compared to the engineer's estimate of $5,830,000, excuse me, $5,830,407.82. There were 10 bids received in total. There are 150 working days allotted to the contract, which is expected to begin in March. So that puts a tentative completion date in October of this year. However, there is a provision in the contract, excuse me, my voice is touch and go, to allow for the contractor to complete the majority of the work this summer, with the exception of some identified long-lead items, so that could be opened sooner. This contract includes site development of Greg Cuyahoga Park Phase 1A, which includes a main park entrance for both public and emergency a main park entrance for both public and emergency access, about 75 parking spaces, illumination, dry water and sewer utilities for future connection, an inclusive playground, a large picnic shelter, approximately two miles of paved and soft surface trails, and an 18-hole gold-level disc golf course. The majority of the funding for this project is coming from general fund committed reserves with two additional grants, one from Department of Commerce and one from RCO. With this being only Phase 1A of this project, there are still a number of improvements forthcoming that are not yet funded or designed. So highlighted here in grayscale is what's included in Phase 1A, which encompasses most of this property, primarily trails through the disc golf course to the north there. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions council might have.
Any questions? Can I get a motion?
I would move to award Lacey contract number PW 2022-06 to Low Bitter Midway Underground LLC of Toledo, Washington, in the amount of $6,136,785.84.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just excited to see this getting going.
So, committed general fund reserves are 5.480, and then we got two grants. So that kind of leaves a remainder of $342,764.16, which will go where?
Which, well, one of the elements of this is, this is, the estimates are a little bit more than what we have budgeted for. And, but also, part of that is, we have a 10% contingency fee in there, too. So with this project being scheduled for substantial completion by June 30th, except for the long lead items, we'll be able to monitor construction and costs and see where we come in. And this may be something we could bring back to council as some proposed budget amendments. We do have reserve dollars that can cover that extra cost through either our new fund of the real estate excise tax reserve fund, or we have some other park reserve funds that we can also look at and locate for that cost.
Go ahead.
So with the substantial work being done by June, does that mean we'll be able to possibly open the park at that point?
That's correct. There is language in the contract to allow for public access of completed and accepted areas of the park.
Do you think that probably added to the additional costs? Because we're telling them that, that doesn't give them a ton of time to get this completed.
It is an accelerated schedule, so that may factor into the bids that we've received, yes.
And that is predicated on some of our grant funding being timed, since it would be expended a certain amount of time. So we wanted to make sure we didn't lose that grant funding.
No, that makes sense.
Just if I could add, that doesn't mean that all the elements of the park would be open. So I think you mentioned the long lead items, but maybe certain areas could be open, but not all.
Yeah, at least the walking trails or something like that.
As long as we can block off adequately the portion that still needs to be worked on.
Got it.
The long lead items that we have identified in advance are the picnic shelter and the playground equipment primarily. There could be others, but those we expect to be longer than June 30th.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? And then it's been moved and seconded to award Lacey contract number PW 2022-06 to Low Bitter. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion, the unanimous carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And the last item I have for my, for the city manager report is, we have a request from the Black Homes Initiative that came in a couple of months, or several months ago now, to join or sponsor their initiative. And I want to turn it over to our assistant city manager, Shannon Kelly-Fong, to provide an overview of the request and the review by the city.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I am, as the city managers mentioned here, to talk tonight about the Black Home Initiative. Just to give a little bit of background, and I want to thank Jennifer Adams, who works in Community Economic and Development Department, because Jennifer was really instrumental in connecting the city with the Black Home Initiative, in addition to doing some of the research that you're going to be seeing here tonight. So I do want to tip my cap to Jennifer. So just for some background, the Washington State Legislature, back in '21 and '22, provided funding to create a study that was, started with the Home Ownership Disparities Work Group. And the goal was to really take a look at why there was a gap between Black Indigenous and people of color comparative to white households when it came to home ownership. The findings of this study were 27 actionable recommendations for the immediate and long-term policy changes that could help promote more equitable home owning, ownership opportunities here in Washington State. Around the same time, there was a group that started to form in the greater Seattle area with a mission to increase homeownership opportunities for low and moderate income Black homeowners. And they have a goal of providing avenues for home ownership for over 1,500 households in the next five years. And their approach is multifaceted, but it really focuses on growing the pool of available homes for purchase, supporting Black households who want to buy a house and to obtain a mortgage, and then improving collaboration among private, public, and nonprofit organizations, again, to create a more efficient and effective ecosystem for Black homeownership. So one thing I do want to stress about this initiative is, they are really focused on establishing a network. It's not an organization, but it's about bringing people together to be collaborators, to help reduce this gap. So in your packets tonight, you'll find some materials. There is a presentation from the Black Home Initiative. So we had Marty Kushtre join us, who is representative, and he provided a very detailed overview of this initiative, as well as the network. And so in this presentation, you can click on the link that says COE presentation, and you can watch the deep dive discussion that the Commission on Equity had with Marty. But he also provided a couple of attachments, and I added two to your packet here tonight. The first is the presentation that he provided to the Commission on Equity. And as you can see, it provided a lot of really good detailed information, not only on the initiative, but on data for the greater Puget Sound area. So what you see here on the left-hand side is a graph that is showing homeownership rates in the Seattle-Tacoma-Bellevue area. Obviously, we're not included in this part of the metropolitan statistical area, but you could find probably similar data through here. And what this graph is showing is that the percentage of Black homeowners in this area has declined dramatically since the passage of the Fair Housing Act in 1968. And you can see that gap that is really widening between homeownership rates between Black homes and white homes. This presentation goes into the who, what, when, where, why of what created the Black Home Initiative and what they're doing. This is further augmented with the case statement that was provided, and that's attachment three in your packet tonight. So just briefly, when we're taking a look at the overview of this initiative, they are focused on a three-pronged method. Their first prong is to increase the supply of affordable housing, homes to purchase. So this includes increasing buildable land inventory, funding, and then production. Their second prong is to increase the number of new mortgage-ready Black households and sustain the existing households. And this is really done through improving their outreach and engagement efforts, and their support teams, and then improving lending practices and products. And then the third prong is to increase community engagement and aligned actions. And this is really increasing Black-led developers, aligning philanthropy, aligning policies, and increasing and incentivizing collaboration through the network. And you can see all of the various ways in which they are endeavoring to do this. Like I mentioned, this really is a network, and they have over 100 partners that are signed on to participate in this initiative. And I just wanted to highlight some of the government entities that are involved. Like I mentioned, there are over 100. So if you go to their page, you will find nonprofits, you will find for-profits, you will find a variety of entities. But just a couple of governments that are involved include Burien, Seattle, Tacoma, Toquilla, Olympia, Pierce County. So some of the partner principles for joining is to strive to right the wrongs of past discriminatory practices, to honor that this is a very complex issue, and one thing isn't going to take care of the entire issue, and that you really have to have a multifaceted, multi-pronged approach, embracing the power of hope and trust, and then finally engaging a network. So fully engaging with this work and building off of those collaborations with entities from a variety of backgrounds and perspectives. The initiative itself, as you will see in the presentation, has done quite a bit from only having been around for a couple of years. But I've put up just a few things. They have really honed in on collecting a lot of data and getting information out there and available. They've also had a lot of programs dedicated to helping increase the demand side, as well as the supply side. They've been working on changing policies and systems. They were instrumental in the Covenant Home Ownership Act, which created the Covenant Home Ownership Account. They've been leading in some local regulatory reforms and ideas. And they're also being a convener and connector for providing opportunities for further involvement. I added this slide because I think it's really important to highlight that one person or group cannot carry this work. To combat the centuries of discrimination against the Black community, it takes a network, and it really just is in alignment with their philosophy of connecting and bringing people together to work on this issue. So here in Thurston County, in last summer, there was interest, and this prompted conversations to bring the initiative down, to learn more about what kind of opportunities could exist beyond their focus primarily in King County. This led to a lot of stakeholder meetings, and you can see the group that they met with. This included the Regional Housing Council. And through these conversations, there was a request that the initiative expand their efforts here into Thurston County. Based off of this request, we also, like the city manager mentioned, invited the initiative to come to a Commission on Equity meeting to provide an update on what they're doing, and how community members, partners, other government groups could get involved. And so after the meeting with Marty Kushtre and learning more about the initiative, the Commission on Equity unanimously recommended that the city join the initiative. So included in your packet is a draft letter of interest to join the initiative. And what I do want to highlight about this draft letter is that it talks about, again, the city's commitment to equity, and really re-articulating some of the materials that were espoused in the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Strategic Plan, and how our equity vision and mission is in supportive and in alignment with the initiatives. It also talks about how the city could, at times, act as a leader, partner, and advocate in supporting efforts to increase homeownership and reducing displacement, as is one of the strategies identified in the plan. So with that, the question for the council tonight is moving forward with this potential request. It is recommended that we do move forward with the letter to request that we should be able to join the Black Home Initiative, and that would result in us sending this attachment to the Black Home Initiative and hopefully getting a response. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission has on this effort.
Well, I would move that we would move forward with joining the Black Homes Initiative and send attachment one, which would be a letter from me asking to join the Black Homes Initiative.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Just, obviously, I've been, this has been introduced, and then something from the mayor of Olympia has been, took an interest in as well. And I've had several conversations with him. And so it'd be great to align the city of Olympia and Lacey on this issue. And I think there's a, obviously, a lot of work that needs to be done to sort of right the wrongs of redlining that happened in the past. And I think this is a first good step in helping to correct that.
I joined this initiative last summer as a lender, because I, you know, I see the disparities, and I get to see that. I live in this world, all day, every day. And so when it came across my desk, I didn't, I didn't know. I think it was the mayor of Tacoma who sent it to me. And I joined it immediately, just to see, you know, like, where can I fit in, where can I help? And so it was a surprise to see it come through the city. I didn't, you know, I probably should have thought of that. Right? But yeah, excited to help.
Anyone else? Then it's been moved and seconded to forward this letter, joining, with us, joining the Black Homes Initiative. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion, unanimous carries.
By the way, you can join as an individual member as well.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. That concludes the city manager's report tonight.
So now we're on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor?
I do have one quick one. The EDC met last week, Wednesday, and we, we finished out our board of directors ballot, and the returning members are Dr. Tim Stokes, you guys know, and Cecilia Lovelace, returning to the board. We have some new members to the board as well, including Mitch Deeds from Cold Wilbanker, Al Yee, Mike Brewer, Todd Hanson, Melissa Grant, who is a Providence doctor, I think she's over all the doctors there. Officers, president-elect will be Jessica Jensen from Cap City Law. Carrie Whistler will remain a secretary, and Mike McGauley, obviously, is our accountant and treasurer. Tom Water, council member Peter Gaby stepped down, but the mayor of Tom Water did step up in his place. And so we will have her for the next year. Commissioner Ty Mencer provided a discussion to the board on the recent naming of Thurston County as a fan zone community for the FIFA World Cup. So he brought that out shortly after you brought it here. There are nine such fan zone communities designated by FIFA in Washington State. The tournament will be held from June 11, 2026, through June 19, 2026. This designation does not mean that a team will be based in Thurston County, but our community will be focused on welcoming and hosting some of the estimated 750,000 people who will descend upon the Northwest to watch these tournaments. So a committee organization will be designated as the lead for the effort, that will be responsible for planning, hosting, volunteers, volunteering, and events, and other activities. So this is something that will have to be put together, specifically for this person, for this person, for this event. It'll be kind of ad hoc. And we just, as a board, we just kind of discuss how it's going to be a really unique opportunity to showcase this community to the world. So very excited. And during that meeting, I thought, you know what, FIFA is ready to come here and bring their biggest, brightest show that they have, what happened to the NFL? Okay. We got a new stadium, 2002. We haven't seen a Super Bowl yet. TVW joined us, Renee Radcliffe, who's the president and CEO of TVW, joined us. She provided an overview of the organization's major renovation and redevelopment plan for their operational and productional offices and studios located at the corner of Capitol Way and Union Avenue. So TVW has bought up the neighbors, and they have a cap plan to build a pretty, pretty good-sized location there. So Renee discussed the impact and the role and why Reese at TVW has, and their programming has, because they're, you know, they have an audience of a little over 2.5 million viewers, and most of their stuff that they, that they put out is government stuff. And so all eyes on the Northwest and our legislature and different municipalities through TVW. The project is planned at $65 million worth of development, and construction is to commence in 2026 and to be completed in 2028. So there are a few renderings out there, but they are not yet full, complete rendering. So if you see them, know that that may not be the final. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilman Greenstein?
Just want to report tonight. EMS Thurston Medic One met on January 23rd. Most of the meeting was spent talking about the comprehensive plan. I've been on a committee for, I think, about two years now, that we've been working on putting together a comprehensive plan. It's finalized now, so we were presenting that at this last meeting. At our February meeting, we will actually take a vote to approve that, and then it'll come out to all of the jurisdictions for review. So looking forward to that. A couple other things that we, that were on the agenda for that meeting. We're in the middle right now of our first-ever ALS Academy. That's Advanced Life Support Academy. So in the past, we've had to send our paramedics out for training. We're now doing the initial six-week protocol training in-house, in here in Thurston County. It's the first time we've done it, and it's going really well. It's the first time we've done it, and it's going really well. Other than that, we appointed a nominations committee, because next month we have nominations for officers, a budget committee, which I'm sitting on again this year, and an ALS contract negotiation committee. So we are about to start our next round of negotiations with our partners, who actually house the paramedic vehicles and paramedics within their agencies. And I'm on that committee as well. So it's going to be, it's going to be a busy next several months with EMS. That is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
I just got a little delay here. I have no report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox?
I have one report on the, excuse me, Regional Housing Council, which met on January 22nd. We're looking at having a half-day retreat in May to address bigger-picture issues for the Housing Council. We're going to be forming a subcommittee to work on the substance of the retreat items, but the objectives are to clarify and reaffirm each jurisdiction's interest and intent to resolve affordable housing and homeless services issues on a regional level, to identify the overarching regional goals of the jurisdictions in affordable housing and homeless services, to identify the Regional Housing Council's role in supporting jurisdictions to achieve these goals, and to clarify the role of jurisdictions in implementation of Housing Council actions. So what happens at the Housing Council manager, staff level after, City Council manager, staff level, after the RHC takes an action? So does that, I can send these notes out if it's, if you want more information on that. We also appointed, filled two vacancies on the Homeless Services Advisory Board. The appointees are Michael Jenkins and Dana Evans. We approved a letter sent to 22nd District legislators encouraging reintroduction of the Affordable Homes Act. This is legislation that didn't make it out of the House last year, but it was aimed at increasing the supply of affordable housing by creating a dedicated baseline of funding for the Housing Trust Fund. It would also have dedicated revenue to an Apple Health and Homes account, a developmental disabilities trust account, and operations, maintenance, and services for permanent support of housing and affordable rental housing. And how would you pay for this? Well, they are talking about paying for this through progressive changes to the real estate transfer tax. It would decrease the tax paid by the vast majority of people who sell properties by raising the threshold for the lowest tier rate up to 750,000, and then adding a modest 1% surcharge to the highest tier, which would be sales over $3 million. So if you sold a house for less than 750,000, you wouldn't be affected at all. We are also hearing about the beginnings of working on the five-year homeless plan housing update. They're going to be doing community surveys and outreach. They've already actually started that and will continue into February. They will expect to have the plan fleshed out and adopted by years in. We also just completed the point and time count of the homeless population in several locations. That data usually takes months to actually get the numbers back on, but I will report back as soon as we hear something on that. And then bad news on the housing funding front. We're being told that we're likely to see at least a $4 million reduction in right-of-way funding from the legislature for Thurston County. So that's going to hurt, because that funding pays for operations like at Maple Court and project development, that sort of thing. So stay tuned. I mean, I think everybody's doing their best to try to write that, but we also know that it's going to be an incredibly tight budget year in the legislature, so I think everybody's going to take a haircut on this. That's my report.
So as a part of the Regional Housing Council retreat, is there going to be conversation about moving the Regional Housing Council to an independent?
I think some of that is, some of those goals and objectives are kind of ultimately headed in that direction.
Because obviously, when the Regional Housing Council got started, there was a, that was the goal, and that was the early-on conversations that, because the current process is now everyone's putting their own staff to it, and it's, you know, there needs to be some leadership there, which means it needs to be an independent council. And then you can get into talking about some of these other issues, but until you get to an independent housing council, we're all, you know, we're not all on the same page. So I really hope that there is a push to find a strategy forward on how that becomes an independent council.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's definitely part of the conversation, and I think the ultimate goal. It's just the devil's in the details of how we make that happen.
You have to get started at some point. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Vasquez?
I have one report. The Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative Executive Committee met last week, the 27th, was that last week? Talked about the work plan for TCMC and sort of had a come-to-terms-with moment that we have selected regional climate mitigation goals each year for the last three or so years, but given the capacity of the members of the committee, both staff and executive members of the committee, and just everybody involved, it, some of the goals that that group has selected are large enough that it requires more than just a year to get the goal from start to finish. And so they're going to focus on the goals that we set for 2023 and 2024, and we're going to delay adoption of a next goal until we have more time to really lean in and make more progress on the existing goals. So one of the goals that has been adopted, that is currently in flight and kind of causing this pause on taking on new strategic objectives, is the Home Energy Score Ordinance that I've talked to this group here about before. The details have been a little bit nebulous as this is getting developed. There's been a lot of community outreach and engagement with stakeholder groups, you know, realtors, property owners, environmental groups, members of the community. There is now a draft ordinance that we have, like, that the group has been reviewing and considering. I can send it out. And the next steps are to have jurisdictions review that draft ordinance and consider adoption. If groups throughout Thurston County decide to adopt that ordinance, there's a series of next steps, right? Because the ordinance is just kind of a, this is what we hope to do. But what still would need to happen is things like securing a contract with a Home Energy Score national service provider, executing an agreement with the Department of Energy, possibly recruiting and training some number of Home Energy Score assessors, and a lot of public outreach. Because the idea is that you'd bring somebody in to do a review of your house, to figure out how efficient it is, what your power bill is going to be based on, you know, are you losing warm air under the doors, and are your windows insulated, and do you have good insulation in your attic? All the things that can contribute to a pretty reasonable power bill, or a really, really challenging power bill, right? And something that you might not know in your, in the process of purchasing a home. So the goal is to give purchasers of homes and homeowners more information when they're considering buying a home, or even when someone is planning on selling a home, what are the things that you could do to make your home more sellable, more efficient? So expect more to come in the near future, because we have that draft ordinance now that should come before this council in the near future. Any questions on that? No, you've heard me talk about it before. And TRPC meets on Friday.
Okay. Councilmember Dunning?
I do not have anything to report.
Well? Mayor?
Yep.
I actually left one thing out of my report. We did also discuss the Pacific Salish Economic Development District, and our newly hired executive director of the EDD, Annette Roth, somebody you guys know that name, was introduced to the board, and she had started her role the previous week. So she was there to outline her immediate work program and provide a discussion, you know, what, like, what to expect for this first year. This was inclusive of the establishment of the operational elements of the EDD, the structure, and the newly constituted Board of Directors that is represented of the four counties. So a whole lot more to come on that, because we are really just getting started this year, so very exciting.
That's good news. I just happened to walk in there, and I saw Annette, and I'm like, what are you doing back? It was really great to see her. So with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. So without objection, I will call this meeting adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.